Twenty first, welcome everyone. Sorry for the late start. I imagine you were battling the same conditions outside that we were. And it's a bit of a change for us because we typically meet at the DPW. So this is the first time we're here. And Gil, am I to understand that we're here moving forward?
Permanently.
Permanently? So we'll see. So members present are vice -- my name is Jason Gittle. Members present are Vice Chair Bill Blaze and Greg Lawrence, a member. And with that, we'll start with the agenda, the approval of minutes. Has anyone had a chance to review?
No minutes on the agenda tonight.
August seventh?
They're not ready yet.
They're not ready. Okay. So that'll be a quick discussion. We'll push those up. On a general business 3A, Mr. Fitzgerald from Doran Woodier, welcome. And we are here to listen to your presentation for the new high school pre-application workshop.
Thank you very much. My name is Rob Fitzgerald, Project Manager with Doran Woodier Architects. Watching here today is Brad Doran of Doran Woodier, Eric Willamson, Civil Engineer with CDW, Natalie Brown, Landscape Architect with Brown Institute, and Chris Kenny, former Project Manager with VerTech. So today, we just really wanted to have this opportunity to give a little high-level overview. If I'm speaking this way, does that still work?
I imagine he'll tell us if it's a problem. Carry on, sir.
We are giving just a high-level overview of the project to you, get some initial feedback. Our intention is to come back to you in the fall, probably mid to late October with a formal application. And so really just wanted to have this meeting as a way of introducing the product to you and get some initial feedback. So I'll give a brief overview of the project, and then Eric will come up or sorry, Natalie will come up and give a little overview of the landscape piece, and then Eric will come up and the other piece. So the project is located directly south of the existing middle school and high school.
Oh, awesome.
You see in this, here is the existing high school. The new high school is planned to be constructed directly south of that. We are creating a new entrance drive on the west side of the site. So at this location, we are constructing a new entrance road. This would be dedicated for the high school only. The existing roadway that is currently serving both middle school and high school will become dedicated solely for the middle school. So one of the things that we are doing is actually reducing the number of lanes from four to two with a widening to three lanes towards the end where it meets Landry. So parents will come in here and drop off around this loop. Buses will come in and drop off around this loop. There's planned to be a gate here that will minimize and direct only middle school traffic through this area. Over here is, we're planning to put a maintenance shed. Currently, that is on the backside of the existing high school. So this will provide a maintenance shed and a parking area associated with maintaining the campus. High school entrance drive will have a traffic signal. We hired niche engineering to do, perform a traffic study, which we'll also provide as part of our submission. And basically analyzed because there had been significant traffic issues both on the site and on Landry associated with the schools. And what we found as a result of that is by creating this separate entrance, that alleviated a significant amount of that pressure at that drive. And by adding a signal here, this would allow for safe exiting, particularly for student drivers onto Landry. And so the way that that would be set up is that that would be primarily green for through traffic on Landry with, except during morning and afternoon hours when people are coming and going from this, from this drive. And like I said, we'll present a full traffic report that talks through all of that. So proceeding down through here, the parents for the high school will come down this road and then drop off to this front area here. Buses will come in and come around and drop off on this side and down on the southern end, and then they will both exit out this road. Parents will come this way and around. Softball fields, there's existing softball fields here. We're redeveloping that so that it actually drains well and provides a flat surface. Because of this entrance drive, we've had to rotate this softball field here. So that's also a driver in redevelopment of this, these two fields. And this will also allow the ability for an additional field here as well. We are repaving and reconfiguring this. It's very similar to what it is today, but better, associated with the parent drop-off area. And then down in this portion of the site, we have some parking here primarily for visitors and associated with multipurpose fields here and the stadium. And then parking here mostly for students and faculty, parking with a student entrance also on this side of the building. The way that we've designed the building, we have classrooms down in the southern end with a gym and auditorium on the northern side with close proximity for community use. Around the parking area, we've got a number of handicap spaces distributed around based off of feedback we received with the Commission on Disabilities. Down here, we've located the baseball field and just south of the stadium, really not doing any work at the stadium other than improving the drainage that's currently happening on this west side. And Eric will get into that more in a minute. Down here at the southern end are a number of tennis courts. And then directly below all of this, we have a geothermal well field that you won't see. It'll all be underground. And then around the building itself, we have a number of plazas and landscaping integrated there. On the southern end here, we have, we still have a connection to, however, this is really just an emergency access. So there is another gate here. We met with the fire department. They requested an opticon automated or access control gate. So that's the type of gate that we will be getting. There's one there, this one here. We are looking into the possibility of, when we meet with them again, whether we actually need to have this emergency egress. This is not an entrance to the site in this proposed scheme. It is today. There's an entrance here, but our intention is that this would be just an emergency egress. Planning to do a final review with police and fire to determine whether that is in fact necessary or not. That's the high-level overview. I'll turn it over to Natalie and she can kind of walk through the rest of the landscaping component.
So just a general overview, and I'm now going to jump into two of the areas. We read through your zoning, and our understanding of the zoning for trees within parking areas is every 40 spaces, there needs to be one tree, and then there also needs to be trees every 200 feet. With that, this is what the proposed zoning configuration would be for those parking lots. We took that and then wanted to share some of our ideas of what we want to actually provide for trees in those areas. You can see that we added some trees within parking islands, but also the middle bay, and then took out a tree that's associated closest to the field. This is because there are high fences that are going to be along this field, and we didn't want the tree to kind of inhibit the fencing, and we also wanted to have a clear space. Over on the eastern side parking lot, you can see that we have more trees that are associated kind of at the southern end based off of the parking count. We wanted to add some more trees along the two sides for streaming, especially associated for the neighbors on the eastern side, but we took out trees that was in this long parking strip. The reason for that is for plowing. And we wanted to make sure that there was easy maintenance within these parking lots because there is limited space for plowing around and dumping around these areas. Moving on to the space around the building. You can see that on the site plan that the site is very orthogonal and it's very tight. And to kind of break that down, we wanted to create a concept that kind of played with more curvilinear rounded shapes to kind of create a more inviting space for the students and staff, but also people coming onto the site as well. For the main entrance, we have a way-by drop-off with a raised table. You have sidewalks that take you into the main access of the site. We have this associated bigger plaza that has these wraparound planting circle areas that have benches associated with them and tables and seating. These areas are creating small gathering spaces. You have two small gathering spaces, one larger one, and then a lawn area. This is great for the students coming to and from school, but also offers outdoor amenity spaces for people who are going to the athletics. As you can see around the site, there's a lot of paving, and then there's, the rest of the land is kind of taken up by the athletics. We really wanted to provide an amenity space for people to come and gather, congregate, and then go to those places as well. As we wrap around the building where you have the bus parking or the bus drop-off area, you can see that we created a design to wrap around and kind of encircle into that entrance. And then we continue that language all the way down to the southern portion of the building. In the southern portion of the building, we have another access into the building. And then you can see that we have another smaller gathering space associated closer to the tennis courts, the baseball field, and then also to the educational bin of the building as well. There is an additional outdoor amenity space associated with the cafeteria that is on the western side as well. Moving on to the walls that are going to be associated with the site. In this main entrance, we have a wall that is against the roadway at the highest height that is going to be looking from the neighbors out. It's going to be five feet tall, and then it drops all the way down to zero feet. So it's sloping down with the grade. As we drive along that access drive, we'll be kind of looping around, we have walls that are associated with the stadium. So right now, there is an existing wall that is associated with the stadium coming from the bleachers side. We are, we have to add an additional wall due to the grading to try to meet the grades to get into the building. At the highest, those walls are going to be five feet high. And then over towards the eastern parking lot, we also have a wall to meet the grades. Right now, at the highest, that wall would be 12 feet, then it starts to slope down to four feet, and then it drops all the way to meeting the grade down into this lower area. Associated with that wall, we have proposed a fence. That fence is going to be a stockade-style fence. Color, the kind of style of that will also be submitted for approval as well. Then athletics. As you can see, the site offers a lot of opportunity for the athletics facilities. We've been working back and forth with the school pretty diligently to understand the needs of the school and what they're looking for, and also the town as well, because we know that some of these areas of land are also used by the town on a weekly or daily basis. So at the northern portion of the site, we have the two softball fields. There are features, a batting cage, scoreboards, everything that you would need for those softball fields. At the center of the site, we have the synthetic turf multipurpose athletic fields. This is in the location of where the current high school is. So we were able to get two decently sized athletic fields. We are proposing to have a movable fence in the center so that when games are going back and forth, that they wouldn't be impeded by balls coming over onto the other side. With the softball or these multipurpose fields, we have fencing and netting that is associated with them for protecting the cars and the walkways all the way around to make sure balls aren't going out into the parking lots. And then on the southern end of the site, we have five tennis courts, and then you have the baseball field as well. Baseball field again has the batting cages, the stands for the fans, scoreboard, and all the other equipment that they wanted in the baseball area. And I think that's actually it for my end.
Thank you.
I'm going to pass it over to Eric.
Just one question on the athletic fields. I'm sorry. And I think the gentleman mentioned it earlier, but you're not changing the orientation of the baseball field? Is that correct?
So the baseball field orientation is the, I can't recall the current orientation.
We are. We're actually looking at.
Okay. That's what it looked like?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And that does not, folks, bring that field closer to the Stoddard Drive residences, or does it?
To the south, we're not really cutting into that tree line.
Okay.
Much.
Okay. So you're essentially using the same lot, if you will?
Yes, there's some extension of the trees on this side, but not to the south.
This is the existing location of the baseball field, and we're basically locating it right here.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
And the orientation of the field that we are proposing is the orientation that is best suited for baseball games for seasonality.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Here's a packet. It has the grading and drainage walls. It starts with an existing additions plan sheet that shows, you know, the existing buildings and where the new high school is in relationship to the rest of the site. But I actually do want to focus more on the drainage. So we have several underground stormwater chamber systems sort of spread throughout the site, including one that's hatched here to pick up the outflow from the existing stadium field, puts it into an underground system, and outlets it back to that, there's a small detention basin out back. Overall, all of these underground systems are connected to existing discharge points. We're not creating any new outlets or outlet flows. Rear of the site generally drains to that existing basin. We have a couple of systems connecting to the existing outfalls that happen to the east. And to the front and to the west of the site, again, this portion of the site sort of flows towards Landry and discharges over in this general direction. So all of these underground systems are there to, you know, mitigate the increases associated with the changes in perversion so that we could match the pre-existing flow conditions.
Those mainly infiltration or detention?
The soils aren't great. So there will be an infiltration component, but it's not going to be a lot of infiltration occurring.
Enough to meet the criteria and?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons they're also as big as they are.
I figured they're very large.
Yes. I mean, unless you want to get into the specifics of more of the drainage, I'm not sure what else to add at this point.
Questions at this point?
Yeah, just, you said there's existing outfalls to the east towards Laurelwood?
Yeah, so there's a small basin here that, and it discharges down to a riprap swell that gets picked up to a pipe and it carries it across.
Okay.
The lot. And there's another one here on the backside of the existing tennis courts. It's also another large riprap swell that heads down to Laurelwood. They're reusing those locations other than, I mean, otherwise we would have to create a new discharge somewhere else through somebody.
That's not really a lot of space.
Correct.
Okay.
I guess just one thing to add, right, because Eric's, like I said, we're kind of trying to match. But what we decided as part of the study too, we've had a number of public forums, so we've heard.
If you could just speak into the microphone, sorry, because it's live right now and no one could hear you.
Sure. So one of the things that we're just doing is with respect to the existing stadium, the existing stadium really doesn't have any drainage associated with it.
Right.
It's really an outfall pipe, which we think is a big part of the problem associated with that. So if you've seen that, right, you can see it just rolls right down the hill there. So as Eric was saying, in the southwest corner there over by the baseball field, we're going to pick that up. So, you know, that's going to be, we feel is going to be a significant improvement for that neighborhood over there. And then we're also going to go and investigate to make sure that those outfalls, the riprap areas, you know, that go through Laurelwood are functioning the way that they should. So net-net, we think that the site will be improved from a drainage perspective, even though technically, you know, we're kind of doing what we have to do, but we're also doing more and it's going to be better and it's going to work. So just to add that.
Thank you.
Yeah, because Laurelwood is a private road, so the residents maintain or are responsible for the maintenance of all those systems. So.
Right. And we have to, you know, match or have the flow be equal to or less than what's happening now. That's definitely our target. And as for the field, like I said, this hashed area is specifically just for the field. It's going to be one system, but, you know, it's almost half the size of the system is dedicated really just for the flow for the existing stadium.
So right now on the existing, is that, there's just a point source discharge coming out of that?
Yeah.
Right there?
About right here is, there's a 15 or an 18-inch pipe that just sort of discharges out into the slope and goes down the hill.
Okay. Greg, any questions at this point?
That was going to be my question with respect to the drainage because we've heard about that.
Yeah.
And I know that your only obligation is to make it neutral. So I was wondering if there was going to be any type of improvement.
So our drainage analysis as part of the stadium is assuming that our existing condition goes back to, you know, we're assuming it's just all grass and not a synthetic field. So we're not trying to even match what it's doing now. We're trying to match what it was doing before they made it a synthetic field as best we can, because we don't, you know, some of its assumptions, because we don't have good plans of what it looked like before.
Yeah, essentially, we're, like Brad mentioned, we're capturing all of that water and putting it through an underground stormwater infiltration system, so it'll be incredibly improved from what it is today.
I would hope, yes.
Yeah, there's no mitigation there now.
Right.
And we're going to have the mitigation.
Okay.
So the intent for tonight, you know, we really just wanted to have this opportunity to meet with you and see if you had any thoughts or ideas on what we should be looking out for, prepare for. If you want to minimize an extended permitting process, you are under a schedule. And so that was really one of the main ideas behind meeting with you ahead of time. So if, even after this meeting, if any of you have any comments or questions or thoughts around things that we should be prepared for, that we should be prepared for, we'd be more than welcome to ask. So it'd be great.
Sure. High level. Well, first off, I'd offer the board members an opportunity to provide feedback.
I just have a question, a couple. So we're now segregated into middle school and high school entrances. Is the like going to remain where it is today for the middle school?
Yes.
Okay. I know the fire department has final say, but I would get rid of that entrance in the middle just because I think it's going to confuse people.
Yeah, it was not an entrance, it's an emergency exit. But yeah, we agree with you.
Right.
And which is why we want to make sure that the fire department doesn't have an issue with it.
Okay. I would push him towards not having it.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Gil, if you could reiterate that from our point of view as well, that'd be great. And then my only other question is, so the maintenance building, is there any other place for it? Could it go on the other side of the new road versus kind of near the neighbors?
Yeah, we looked at a number of locations on the site, and it seemed to make sense to have it there. If you could just speak into the microphone, because it's being live recorded and stuff. Yeah, sorry about that. We did look at a number of different locations for it, and there's really not like a great spot for it anywhere. We wanted to have it so it's easy access off of Landry, you know, instead of having to go all the way through the site to the back of the site for any deliveries of soil and mulch and that sort of thing. So that was a component. Also, you know, didn't want to look at it, you know, as soon as you're approaching the new high school, you know, to see this building right there as you're coming in. We will be working closely with our landscape architect to screen that heavily and provide a significant amount of trees and screening around that so that it's tucked in there as best as we can. But that really ended up being sort of like the best location we could come up with.
I know it says maintenance, so that's, I'm assuming that's just ground maintenance. There's no automobile maintenance going on there?
Right. It's primarily ground maintenance. They are going to have a bay to, you know, if one of their plow trucks breaks down or, you know, that sort of thing, or repairing lawn mowers and stuff like that. They are planning to do some of that work, but, you know, other than that, it's just campus maintenance.
The grade's there, actually. There's a berm. I'll speak loud so you can hear it, right? There is a berm there which acts as a natural kind of buffer towards the Laurelwood neighbor.
Yep.
And also, right, that maintenance shed itself is going to be big enough so they can do all that maintenance. So compared to what you have today, it's going to be significantly tidied up.
That's it for me for now.
Okay.
Well, I guess, two questions. The first is, I understand we're going to have two ingress egress points for the middle school and the high school. Can someone explain to me how the traffic's going to go around in and out from each? I was a little unclear on that. And then I think it was on the second sheet when your landscape person was speaking, there was a left and a right, and I don't know which one of those two I'm supposed to be looking at as to what's being proposed. I see a change between one and the other.
Yeah.
But I think I'm looking at the right. I just want to make sure.
We can clarify that. It'll be easier to see with this here. So middle school entering here, parents will loop down here and around. So there's a long queuing area, which is part of the issue today. So there's a decent queuing area for parents and drop-off, and they'll go out and exit out here. And then the buses will come in, in here, drop students off, loop back around, and then exit out here. But this is, again, just middle school. High school parents will come in here, come down this drive, and then drop off at the front of the school, and this is their front entrance, and then loop back around this way and then exit out. Buses will come in this way, and they're going to go this way instead, and then come down here, drop off along this edge, another entrance here, and around the back and enter here. And then they'll continue on. So this is, you know, one way basically around the building, coming up here and then exiting out this way. There's a little loading dock right here for service and deliveries to the kitchen and receiving area. And then to answer your other question. And then to answer your other question.
So, your permitting standards are on the left side. It's labeled in your packet, it's chopped off at the top there. And then what we're proposing, so our take is on your right side.
So I think, I think what we were trying to show is that, you know, permitting requirements for distance of trees and that we are proposing more than the minimum.
Got it. Greg? Bill?
So I'm assuming with the new middle school flow, the intent is to get that queuing off of Landry and into the parking lot?
Exactly.
Are there going to be signs proposed between the two entrances saying?
Yes.
No parking, no loading, whatever they need to say?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Carry on.
Drives me crazy. Has anyone thought about ingress and egress and parking for town elections?
We have.
I presume you haven't been here for one. It's something.
Yeah.
Just wondering if you thought about it.
We haven't really thought about that, but, you know, we do have three really primary separate parking lots. And so by having these separate areas and the distance from them, we think will allow for a smoother operation by it having more, you know, a lot, it's, if you think about, you know, where the high school is today, which is right here, and then we're now extending all the way down here, that there's a lot more roadway for queuing between, you know, when people first arrive and get to their spot and leave, there's a fair amount of time there for traffic to go. And then providing these separate, you know, parking lots, we have about 550 parking lots, parking spaces for the high school and about, I guess, close to 180 for the middle school.
It's not a primary concern of mine, it happens, you know, once every two years or something, but...
But it should, it should work from a flow perspective. You know, you're always, depending on how fast people are going in and out, but the other thing is Rob's saying is that 550 on the upper deck associated with the high schools is more than what you had before. So you're going to have more parking available for an event like that.
Gents, anything else?
I don't think so.
You know, from a high level, and you asked for us to submit it to Gil, and we'll do this, but just to cover some things that we've already lightly dusted on, but like...
Can I ask one question, sir?
Sure.
Is it possible for the high school to be net zero?
Is it possible?
Yeah.
Yes.
Anything's possible, it's just what's the cost.
So what is it now in terms of energy efficiency and what would it take to reach net zero status? It's becoming more popular at educational institutions.
So, we are planning this, for this to be a net zero energy ready building, so we are meeting the stretch energy code and surpassing it in a lot of ways. So this is going to be probably the most insulated building in the region by the time we're done. So that first starts with super insulating the envelope, reducing the size of the HVAC units accordingly on the roof and the lighting systems, all controlled LED lights. And then, operationally, you know, we have the geothermal wells, so it's all electric building. We are designing the roof to support solar take, photovoltaic panels, and we're also looking at the possibility of whether it makes sense to have some solar canopies. So in order to get to net zero, the idea is you want to reduce your loads as much as you can, which we are doing, so to maximize the amount of energy you can to support that load, right? So offsetting it with photovoltaic panels to provide the power. So in order to achieve the net zero, you know, we would need to have the whole roof with solar panels plus additional solar panels. And another option to that is, instead of, like, if you're not able to provide all of the solar panels on the site, you know, there's also an option of achieving it through the purchasing of renewable energy certificates where that renewable energy is provided somewhere else in the country. And so there's different ways of achieving that net zero energy. We'll be exploring into those and looking at options of, you know, do we, right now there's no money in the project to actually purchase the solar panels, so up to now we've been talking about going through a power purchase agreement, leasing back solar panels and entering into it with a solar panel developer. But another option at some point, if there are funds remaining at the end of the project, is to, with the idea of purchasing the solar panels. And so we've initiated discussions with North Attleboro Electric Department as well as to what their rates might be and what kind of discounts they can give. So we're right in the middle of all of that.
Gil, anything else? Gentlemen? Just high-level stuff. Light control, spilling from the site, we're going to want to talk about a little more. Sound control from the site, we're going to want to talk a little about, a little bit more. I'd like to know, and I know you've done this many, many times, so I know you have a phasing plan that everybody seems to agree with. I'd like to know, though, I'd like to dig a little deeper when we have further discussions on how that phasing plan turns, how your tempor, do you have any temporary traffic measures and then when those become involved as far as school being open, things along those lines?
Just to check on that. Is there going to be a temporary parking area somewhere for construction workers?
Yes.
Okay.
They are, right now, I believe they're going to be all contained within the site.
Everything is.
Within the construction area.
As the building kind of morphs, so too will those temporary lots, and the construction lot will always be separate.
Okay.
But yeah, that's a good point, we'll make sure that we include that.
Thank you. Parking, current versus proposed spaces, are you asking for any difference between what we require spatially per spot than what you're going to actually line? Do you have electric vehicles? What percentage of electric vehicle parking are you going to offer? I know that you'll provide a landscaping schedule, thank you for the details this evening. I think those are some of the high-level, high-level things that we'll probably dig deeper into.
Great.
Okay? And we'll give you a list.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate your time tonight.
Appreciate you. Okay, well, okay, public here?
Well, just ask.
Okay. We've given our concerns, but because you're here and if you're here and you're interested, is there any questions you'd like us to include on our list that we're going to submit? And I'm asking the public for feedback, if, take every opportunity you have, if you're here. Anybody? No? Okay. Thanks, folks.
Very much.
Thank you.
I'll let them clear and then we'll get going.
Yeah, because I lost my packet and... Oh, boy.
Yeah, so did I.
That's what happened last time.
Good night.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Okay, that's how I get it last time, all right.
Okay, I have 3B on the agenda, Noel Diantino, 104 North Washington Street, Level 2 Site Plan Review for Scribble Time Daycare. Welcome.
Good evening, member of the, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name's Patrick Sullivan, I'm an attorney with an office in North Attleboro. I'm here on behalf of Noel Diantino. She is the petitioner here on a site plan application. With us as well is Noel's engineer, Matt, I couldn't even try to pronounce his last name, but with Cataldo and Associates.
It's Sienna Skewich, but nobody says it that way, so.
And Steve Nelson, her architect as well. I'm going to open it up, basically, this is a site plan review hearing, obviously, so Matt's going to be able to do most of the talking here, then we can answer any questions. A little background, just preliminarily, is recently, we did go before the zoning board and we do have a rendered decision. That was minimal relief, really. Our open space went from 25% to, I think it was 22.8%. We had a finding on the parking, in essence, because we have overlapping uses, basically, a finding that those weren't going to be at the same time, so that our, I think it's 49 parking spaces that we are showing is compliant, that we didn't even need a variance on it, and then the loading dock requirement was, in essence, through a variance wave. So it wasn't huge asks in terms of the zoning board, but just for the background on that. So with that, Matt, I think probably can give you the best overview of the site, what we have going on for an existing site that I think everybody's aware of. This is the Grace Episcopal Church and you're very familiar with it, but he can go over the site and then we'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you. On the left, we have the existing site. We have, I'll go through utilities first. Currently, we have electric coming in from High Street. That will stay, but there'll be an additional electrical service coming in up from North Washington. They need more power, more classrooms, all of that. Water comes in off of High Street as well. There's going to be new water coming in up in North Washington for sprinklers and larger water as well. I think gas comes in off of High Street, everything comes in off of High Street. As far as sewer goes, this building is old and we have sewer coming in. There's a sewer manhole right at the edge of the property, that goes out to High Street, that picks up that part of the building. There's a sewer coming out the front of the building and there's also a sewer coming out the right-hand side of the building. Those two, last two, connect in front of the building and discharge out to North Washington. We are replacing all the sewers because Noel had them all cambered, they're all old, they've got roots and everything, and they've had backup problems in the building, so we're just replacing them outright. There's some manholes. Drainage and runoff. Right now, the site, most of the site actually drains out to North Washington. The whole right-hand side in front of the property along the roof drains out to North Washington. If you've walked by there, the left-hand grass area, you can kind of see it from the street, there's a 12-inch plastic pipe that some of the roof drains are tied into, it just discharges onto the lawn and out to North Washington. The left-hand side of the property and the rear of the property drain out to High Street, that area, along with some of those roofs, the back part of the roof. There's only a small portion of the back right corner of the site that doesn't discharge out either to either street. In a proposed situation, what we're doing is taking most of the runoff from the site and actually putting it to the ground. We're taking the front roof section, we're putting in that into a cul-de-sac system that's in the corner of the building. We're taking the two front parking areas and putting them each into their own left and right side. Those, all of those cul-de-sac systems are sized to handle a 100-year storm event. So we're going to have not much water now, that's now going to North Washington, that's going to discharge after the site is built. On the left-hand side, we cannot put any type of drainage system in because all those utilities I mentioned earlier, there's nothing to put over there. But what Noel is planning on is the pavement that's in the back of the building and the right side of the building, that's going to be ripped up and replaced by some impervious type of material. She's looking at wood chips right now, that can change. Those are going to be playground areas that are going to be fenced off for the children. Safe, it'll be fenced out back, the white vinyl for the safety of the kids. I'm also proposing, if you can see them highlighted, some crushed stone trench areas back there that will drain those areas so we don't have that water coming out to the site. That's it, quickly, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Could you explain the amount of parking spots that are going closest to Washington?
The amount, the exact number, I'm not sure off the top of my head, I mean, I could do ballpark it. It's probably half the amount, half of the 49, roughly.
And that's, what would the available, can you explain, take me through the available green space that's going to be left when you're done with this plan?
Surrounding, the edges of the property, that play area as well, that's not impervious, won't be any impervious anymore. And the extremities, in front of the main platform, I don't know what they call that, right in front of the part of the building that's closest to North Washington, there'll be some green space as well. There's plans potentially to have weddings there, so we want to leave a place for a limo to pull up.
Lighting changes on the site?
Most of the lighting, if not all, is going to be building mounted. You have lights on North Washington, that was one of, we talked to the DPW, one of their comments was, they have a pinch point on that sidewalk right now. I don't know if it's a tree or a light or both, that their plow, their sidewalk plow cannot get around, they have to literally go out to the street, come back in. We're widening the sidewalk in that area, so that'll get rid of that pinch point.
I guess I had a few things, maybe because I'm blind looking at, even with my glasses on, looking at the small plan, which would be garbage, snow storage, could you explain the traffic flow?
Traffic flow? You know, the site currently has two narrow entrances, or an entrance and a circular drive. That left-hand drive is where the main entrance is going to be, there's only going to be one entrance up in North Washington. We've talked about more than likely the cycle of parents dropping off kids. Ask Noel, people actually park to drop off their kids? Absolutely, because most of the kids are much younger. And they will probably exit to High Street, but that entrance that goes out to North Washington is 24 feet wide, so it's capable of handling two-way traffic. Snow removal, Noel, we've talked about that. She can, it's probably going to be a loader-type situation where they will put, discharge the snow piles toward the rear of the property. Kids are probably not going to be out playing out back. Well, actually, they probably would.
Mine would. Yeah, I was, and I know that when the applicant was here before and Mr. Nelson as well, that the, you know, drop-off and pickup is staggered. People are going to school, dropping kids off, going to work, that kind of thing. I was just wondering what the plan is in terms of folks coming in, dropping off a kid, where do they go out? And then, I guess that would be the big one for me in terms of, are they coming in? I assume they come in off of North Washington. And do they flow through and then go out the side street to High, or how's that going to work?
That, I would guess that that's what's going to happen for the most part.
Or where's the drop-off point for the building?
Well, there's multiple doors.
Yeah, I know. That's why I'm wondering.
I don't know if you want me to speak, I'm Noel Diantino.
Absolutely.
Right here.
Okay, and your address, ma'am?
451 Elm Street, North Attleboro.
Okay.
So our plan right now is that the only entrance onto the property is going to be North Washington. Parents will come in, they'll park in the parking spots closest to the building. The existing ramp that's there right now, they can also access coming up that way because the elevator will be at the top of the ramp. Then they'll exit outside of High Street until nine o'clock. We're then going to shut... We're then going to shut that High Street gate at nine o'clock. We're going to reopen it at four, when our heavier pickup comes, and go back out that way, so that we're not heavy traffic on our side street. And we've been monitoring, we monitor our enrollment through an app, so we can kind of see the flux of flows, and we feel confident with this pattern.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
She knows her stuff, man. I'm impressed with how I talk to her. I want to ask a question.
That's great. Greg, anything else?
Yeah, just to reiterate, where's the dumpster going to be, and where's the storage for snow going to be? I assume they're not trucking the snow off the site.
No, our plan right now is to put the snow in the back of the building and over by that garage that's there. It's going to stay existing. There's space around that. And we did talk to a couple of plow people about if we had to remove the snow, because we honestly will be, the church facility will be actually a gym during the day for the kids, so we will still have large gross motor activity for them and maybe the snow piles.
Now, we saw a rollaway dumpster. Did buy that garage.
Like I said, I'm, no, I didn't find it. As I said, looking at the small plan, I'm mostly blind.
I did ask Noel, did we get a lot of dumpster area? And she said, no.
No, it's like to the left, if you're looking over by High Street in the bottom-left corner, there's like, you can see it a little time.
I know where the garage is.
Okay, right to the left, look, it's to the left of the garage.
And that existing house is obviously being torn down.
And then, are we doing any landscaping at all on the north Washington street side, between the sidewalk and the parking spaces? Those were my questions.
We have a landscape aisle on each side of the entrance, and then at the outer edges, but along the street, no. You do have the trees, tree wells in the sidewalk and the light.
Thanks, Greg. Bill?
No, Greg covered it.
Okay. I have nothing additional at this time. So what's the next step on this?
We're waiting for peer review.
We haven't got a quote yet. We've asked, so any day. It was asked as soon as we got the application, which was the last Thursday.
And in regards to that, you will see, or they will see, to the maximum extent practicable. We're dealing with, obviously, a redevelopment site that has zero drainage. So we've done, I think, to the maximum extent practicable, because we're handling a hundred-year storm event with the majority of the site, that I don't know how the discussion will go with a peer reviewer, but it's, kind of is what it is. I'm dealing with a hand that's dealt me and doing the best we can to try to.
Are the parking spots 9x18 or 10x20s? All right. So you've already done it.
Yeah. One of the first things to look at.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Gil, any input?
Nope.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Item 3C, Darius Gregory, the Gregory Way project update. And I don't see him in the audience, so Gil, do we have an update?
Yeah, I will provide one. So you saw the very last-minute email at 5:00 PM today notifying us that he's not attending today's meeting. I wish we kind of heard sooner. However, the good news is, he said ASBIL, I'm not sure how complete it is, however, we will send that to peer review and have it inspected. He funded the peer review account a month ago, and I hope, and also, he committed to bringing his engineer to the next meeting as well, to the next planning board meeting to go over the ASBIL.
Which the date of that is September 4th.
So the goal is, the ASBIL we received today will be sent to peer review, and they will go on site visit. I will probably attend this one, since it's unusual. And hopefully, we have some sort of inspection report for your next meeting. I'm not sure, it's kind of tight after the site visit for an engineer to go through everything.
Do we know what we have left on?
That's what I was going to say. What are the outstanding items, and what's the value of the bond we're holding at this juncture?
Yeah, so the bond we have in its full amount, sorry, it's on here, I believe it's like $140,000. And the list of outstanding items we have so far is only what he gave us, right? So I don't want to.
Yeah, I hear you.
So until we get.
Until the peer reviewer goes.
Yeah, until we get the ASBIL looked at. However, there's a lip at the beginning of the driveway that needs to be corrected to mitigate runoff going on to, from the road onto his property. I guess there's ponding at the beginning of the road frequently, like right now during rain events, so that needs to be addressed. And I think the, that drainage system, help me out build the wear. It seems to me to not be established. It's falling apart, it's eroding on the hill where the erosion is, the wear that you're looking at the front left. So that needs to be fixed, and I guess there's some questions on open space in terms, not open space, sorry, shared space between the residents, what each homeowner now is entitled to. I guess that's a conflict with him and those residents, apparently. I'm not sure what it is, but like something built now that's perhaps in shared spaces or shared spaces, so that also needs to be looked at. And also, the binder has been down for quite some time, and he needs to pay relatively soon, or else that road will deteriorate very quickly. So final top coat also.
Yes, I think in his email, he said he wanted the ASBIL reviewed, site inspection, before he top-coated.
Yeah, he basically wanted assurance that everything he's done is good to go before he puts a top coat on.
I mean, weather is happening. Winter is coming, as they say in Game of Thrones.
All right. Public hearings held open. Asian Acres, Darius Gregory and Ryan DuValley.
My name's Peter Lavoy. I work with DNL Design Group. I didn't know that the monitors weren't working, but I do have a large plan that, if you guys don't mind sharing.
Hold on one second. You never even sent us updated plans, even if they were working.
I thought I had emailed you the updated plan set, because, and then the open space and the exhibit plan for Lot 5 for the topography.
Okay, I'm sorry. You did, however, I saw Ryan DuValley's comments about them also needing more updates, so I wasn't sure if we were still, if they were ready for tonight.
Yeah, they were.
Sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
No, that's fine.
It was just.
Yeah, no, so I mean, I do have some updated. I have one large 24 by 36 plan there, if you guys don't mind sharing. I could go through the changes, and then I could inform the plan.
Be less, so it should be okay.
We'll take it.
Okay. So this is the open space plan, and then this is the Lot 5 runoff. So the changes, well, the plan that I created for the open space, so the open space is hatched in red, so it shows the entire open space, which would be 24.6 acres in size. 14.29 acres of that hatched area is upland. The 10.39 acres is wetland. And then, like, the overall parcel is 47.7 acres. So we did adjust the property lines along the Mount Pleasant abutters, and we gave, we did an open space of 10 feet from Lot 5 to Lot 2, and then the open space increases behind Lot 1 to 30 feet, and it goes around and ties into where Mount Pleasant Street is. So there is a small buffer. That was a question that had come up at the previous meeting, that the open space had to be completely around the project to buffer the abutters. So we're giving a 10-foot strip along those abutters, as well as doing plantings along the back of the property lines of the proposed lots. And then another question that had come up is about the existing cot paths. So the existing cot paths on that plan are in yellow. You can see how they run through the red, okay? Those are the existing cot paths. So what I was proposing, because the question was, how can people still access those cot paths from the development? So if you look between Lot 9 and Lot 10, we're providing a 10-foot strip between the two lot, between the two lot lines that's in green, that ties into that existing cot path. So if you follow that existing cot path behind the lots, between Lots 10 and Lot 16, there is another green path that we're proposing as a walking path that'll go behind Lot 10 through 16 and come out near the basin at the beginning of the subdivision. So that gives people access in two locations to access all the cot paths that currently exist in Atabaro and in the back of the project in north Atabaro. So that was, that was my first stab at doing an open space and showing how we would tie into those existing cot paths with proposed cot paths for people in the development. Another question had come up is, on my plans, the existing contours weren't labeled more than what, you know, you couldn't really see what the existing grade was with what was the proposed grade. So I did add a lot more labeling to the existing contours. That was in the overall plan set that I had changed. Also, I had contacted the fire department, the fire chief, and I submitted a truck simulation to him. He did get back to me at the entrance, because there was a question about the boulevard in the entrance. So I did contact him. I sent him a truck simulation plan. He acknowledged that he got it, and he sent me back the profile of the fire truck that I should be using, which I did use, but I will add that profile to the simulation, and I will add it to the definitive part, so it'll be part of the process. Also, I did contact, I tried to contact the DPW and get comments from them. I did receive comments from them. I'm working on their comments. And then Gil provided us with a peer review letter that I'm currently working on, because that's similar, that peer review letter is similar to the letter that I received from conservation.
Send the tablets.
So I am working.
Yeah, I read that one.
Yeah.
B&amp;T review?
Under H&amp;W, it's horsely win this one.
Oh, horsely win.
Yeah, so they have some, I mean, I looked through the, I've been working on those, because those are also part of conservation comments, so I am working with those. A lot of them are kind of like just cleaning up the plans. And then the last thing was a list of waivers. I haven't officially come up with a list of waivers yet, but I am in the process of doing that.
Which would encapsulate a lot of our future conversation, right, when we see those. So take those as soon as you have them.
Okay. No, that's fine. I will get those.
Bill?
Yeah, these, what are you looking up? Because I think it's the same thing we're thinking.
You go.
These aren't really lots, right? Because this is.
No, I'm not even there yet.
Oh, okay. I appreciate the fact you're reconnecting the cot paths. My only concern is just thinking in the future, where these are all demise parcels. Is the public going to have access to this open space? Or is this going to, how is this going to work? Because does that now mean the public can just walk through all these yards?
No. It's common area to the homeowners as to the yards.
Okay.
But not as to the public. The open space is public space.
Okay.
So it'd be like, it'd be the same as a condo, right? The HOA has the rights to land. I can't go pitch a tent on a condo's green.
Okay.
But maybe what Bill is saying is, if it's possible to create some sort of entry or some space where residents from the public could walk and access the open space. Not a parking lot, you don't have room for that, but.
Right. So you want, you want the ability for the public to come onto these?
I was just asking how it was going to work, because, you know, you're reconnecting to existing paths, which just so happened to be on some of these lots.
Correct.
So I didn't know if, you know, the public could just park there, and then basically have the right to walk across a handful of.
That would be, I guess I would have to ask Ryan about that in the homeowners association, which the project would be, you know, they would be in charge of that, the homeowners association, and because we have a shared septic, you know, we're going to have to maintain the drainage, we're going to have to, I would guess, plow the road, because that's, it's a private.
Well, if there was some sort of, and, you know, the board could discuss this later, see how they feel, but if there is some sort of entrance to the open space, I guess, I understand they have the ultimate right to each way to access from their physical building, right?
Correct.
If there was an entrance somewhere else, maybe near the road or something, where someone could walk and just see a visible entrance and get onto the open space.
Right. So there are two, there are two entrances that access the road, because if you look at the existing cot paths, they're in yellow, and the two cot paths came up. So I tried, came up and kind of go right to where the road is. So what I tried to do is, I tried to pick locations that were similar, so that's why I picked between Lots 9 and Lot 10. It's in the cul-de-sac, but yet, there is a cot path there. I've done walking paths between two houses in an open space development before. And then the last one is right at the entrance, near that detention basin, which is part of the open space. So there is, if you look at that first detention basin, as you come in on the left, there is a green line that goes down Lot 16, which would be the walking path, and then it goes back towards, you know, it goes all the way through those, back of those lots. And most of those lots you can't use, really, because there's the 25-foot no disturb for conservation, so it's right at the edge of that 25-foot. So I tried to put it, you know, in the father's back, away from the residents' homes, and then it does tie in. And then if you look, it goes to the middle of the project, and then it goes out towards Atabaro, where there are a bunch of cot paths there. I thought that's what the board wanted me to do, is try to use that, use, you know, use the existing cot paths and keep access to them, and that's why I proposed that.
Is there a mechanism in there that allows us to make this a public street, or does it say, the verbiage clear, that it has to be private? Because I know DPW doesn't like private streets.
I personally have not looked into that. I'm, I guess I'm on other areas.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there was an email or a letter from DPW saying they want to make, they want to own the water, they want to, okay. So the whole road's going to have to have an easement anyway, for them to be able to access it just for the water.
Yep.
Sewer is obviously private, because it's a combined system.
What's the life of the private sewer? What's the expected lifespan of that until it has to be replaced?
I mean, if they maintain it. Well, in a system like that, you have to, you have to do a Title V inspection every two years on it to make sure it's still working properly. That's part of the approval process. I have one right now in Upton, Mass, that has, is similar to this. They're individual homes, and we go out there every two to three years to give the board a health and to give the management company, letting them know that it's still working properly, the pumps are working, you know, the leach field's working. If you maintain it and pump the tanks, that's, that's why there's like one big tank. So the homeowners association is responsible that they pump those tanks, you know, it's not like if you had an individual. It's not like if you had an individual tank and no one's pumping it.
I understand you can do it. This is more of a.
Well, I'm just saying.
A curiosity where I'm asking you.
I don't know, I mean, they should, they should, they should.
Because.
They should last 30 years at a minimum, but, I mean, if you maintain it.
Yeah.
That's the key. It's the maintenance.
It's the maintenance. And I would think a management company, they stay on it because they don't want problems because people sell units, and then every time someone sells a unit, there is a Title V that has to be done again.
Yeah.
For that. So, I mean, the one in Upton that I've been working on, it's been, it's been like 12 years right now, and the system's still working fine. It's the same type of system. It's a Presby. It has, it has two large tanks, you know, and then a pump chamber.
That's a new term for me.
So, I mean, it's, it was based off the same, same thing.
So I know the board of health is going to require the HOA to set aside money for the maintenance of the septic system. Like, that will be a condition that they impose in whatever review that, you know, they do.
Not our purview.
Yeah, I forgot, you know, what it's called.
Whatever they decide is whatever they decide.
Greg, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I, I don't want to do the math of dividing acres and everything else. So is it subject to the Wetlands Protection Act? And can you break down the percentages as are required by the bylaw so that we can check the boxes?
Okay, I can do that.
Looking for a table that says required and what they provided, basically.
As the percentages, because that's how it's laid out in our bylaw. And then the other thing is, our bylaw requires that the plan's going to indicate natural features, so, and historic features. So I don't know if that's stone walls, if there is a redwood tree on there. I know there's not. But, but things of that nature, because, you know, that issue has come up before where we've had natural features such as trees that have.
Vanished.
Gone walking away, notwithstanding orders that they knocked. So I don't know if there's been an inventory of those types of features just so that we can make sure that they're protected, if there's anything out there that's natural, historic, of that kind of value. Because, you know, the bylaw is really pointed towards preserving those features and allowing this condensed type of development. And so I guess my point is, I don't know the percentages of things as it's broken down on the plan, so I can check the boxes that it meets the requirements under the bylaw. And then with respect to what's out there right now, I don't think we have an inventory of what's there and what features we may or may not want to preserve.
Okay, I mean, I can do that. I mean, I would think natural, natural features would be like ponds, streams, wetlands, you know.
Stone walls, I don't know.
Very large trees.
Very large trees, things of that nature.
Okay.
So I guess what I'm driving at is, I personally don't want to go to the extent of requesting a development impact statement, but I would like to know what's out there, and if there are any things that, under the special permit to grant this project, we should be looking to preserve.
Okay, because I can tell you that, I would say 85% of the open space is habitat that we're preserving. There are vernal pools in Atabaro that because of where we put the open space and the conservation.
Our neighbors to the south are not my concern.
Well, I'm just saying, that, that's a big thing with the state and natural heritage.
I understand, I'm just being facetious. But I guess what I'm trying to make sure is that, to the extent that there are any of those types of features that would have to be listed in a development impact statement, we're aware of those and that we can take steps to ensure that those are preserved, you know, and meet the meaning or the intent of the bylaw. And then with respect to the percentages of land and the ratios and the like, I just want to make sure that we're checking the box that it meets a requirement with respect to, this is required, this is what's required, here's where we're at.
Okay.
And I can look at it and say, oh, it requires, I don't know, 53%? They got 54, just like parking spaces.
Okay.
Just because I'm, maybe I'm daft, but I can't look at an engineered plan like that and do that math in my head.
Okay, no, I understand.
I know you can.
No, I guess I didn't know exactly what you guys were looking for. I gave you a breakdown of what the open space was.
Oh, yeah.
Was the upland in wetlands? So I can go back now and I can look, and I can write, I can come up with a table and give you that.
Yeah, so if you look at the bylaw, it's like, at least 30% of the total tract area, of which 50% shall not be protected under the Wetland Protection Act, or slopes and excess of 25% shall be set aside. Just give me the percentages so that I can say, okay, well, it meets I-3. And I-2, same thing, 80% of the total tract area excluding.
What section is that you're reading out of?
It's under the open space residential development.
Okay.
It would be 290, 27, subsection I.
Okay.
Just to make sure we're, you know, checking those boxes.
No, that's fine. Now I know what you want.
Yeah. And then, you know, the other one is G, H, is that reading that right where the percentages are? I lied. It's in G, 2 and 3. And then my other request was to the direction of J, 2B, which is, the plan shall indicate the location and extent of natural features as the SP us may require.
Okay. But you don't have anything specific for the natural, you know, have anything specific for natural features?
So what I'm trying to thread the needle of is not requesting a development impact statement.
Okay.
But what I would like is, because I think there's a Venn diagram without having to go through that complete process that would lay out the type of things that would be important here.
Okay.
As to any interesting historic natural features, you know, the great, I don't know, oak trees, stone walls, walking paths, obviously you got those, that kind of stuff, just so we have an inventory of what's there and what items we should look to preserve within the intent of the bylaw.
Okay. I can do that.
Good, good stuff, Greg. Anything else?
No, that was it. Other than that mouthful of.
No, that's great. Bill, any follow-up?
Nope.
Anything for planning? Okay, thank you. Oh, this is a public hearing. You're right, sir. It's a public hearing, so we're taking feedback from anyone who'd like to give it on anything. So why don't you come on, come on up?
Oh, boy.
Yes, sir. Sorry. Sorry. Your name and address, sir.
Phil Rose, 87 Mount Hope Street, North Atabaro, Mass. Yeah, I knew you'd recognize.
I know.
You threw me off when I didn't see any red here.
That's all, it's getting, you know, it's been a while.
There you go. All right, I have a few questions for you, and I have one for the board.
Yep. Mr. Rose, if you could address all the questions to the board, and then we'll get there.
Okay. To the board.
Yes, sir.
Question one. When he talks about cot paths, first thing that hits my mind is like a golf cot path on a golf course. Are these paths between each house? Is it just a swath of land that'll have tall grass in it, or is it an access to walk up and down between houses?
He's talking about old-fashioned carp paths that exist through the property.
Okay, so not cot paths for vehicles, but if they exist for walking.
Essentially, right now, it would be like the, best analogy I could give you would be like the woods behind my folks'.
Yeah, where you have access.
Old farmland.
Correct.
There are old walking paths. There used to be carp paths where, I don't know, the sheep walked through.
Yeah.
We're asking for identification and preservation wherever we can.
Yeah, because I've lived there 40 years. Elaine Hogan, whose house bought is at 67 where the access is going in, and that all property used to belong, one time I believe, to the Baholic Farm at that end of town. And then up the other end, by Gregory Way, Lloyd Nelson's father owned it, and from, he was from Sweden in the 1860s, and he owned basically property from down there, 67, all the way up past the overpass of 295. And when they built 295, and they just took that property from him, eminent domain, so over the years, he's, you know, sold off his property, and then after he passed away, Dr. Lowe owed some property, and Mr. Gregory came in with the development of the 25 acres that was left up there.
Yeah, so when we're saying carp paths.
Just existing walking paths. I see in the woods all the time.
Yeah, not driving, you know, ATVs through them.
Yeah, we have, we have the walking paths way out in the back that go all the way down to powder house way into the Atabaro side by the PA Club. Okay, so that takes care of that. Now, you were talking about, it's going to be HOA for the people. You're going to have to plow the driveways, and you're going to have to maintain the septic systems, and you're going to probably have to maintain the billing for any electricity or maintenance for the plumbing, and not the plumbing, but the maintenance, for the septic systems, building itself that retains it. Does that mean, since just the roads are property, that the people actually don't have, they're still responsible for the property taxes of the house? They own the, they own the property, they own the houses, but the access road and the septic system collection is a responsibility of the HOA?
Yeah, it's similar to a condominium.
Okay, I got that. All right, then we talked about the buffer zone protection, because as people on Mount Hope Street and that live, like Elaine, are people, when these houses are built, when they go on in their back deck in the morning to have a cup of coffee, are they going to be looking into somebody's kitchen window? Is there any type, any buffer protection between the existing houses and the new houses coming in? Any hedges or things like that? Or is there, what exactly is the distance?
How long is that?
Because some people, that's the first question they had was, what am I going to do when I want to go on my back deck? And am I going to be looking into somebody's backyard?
I think that's a two-part answer. There is a buffer that's being left. It varies in width between 10 feet and 30 feet along the back of, there's no addresses on these, but 2, 3, 4, 5 lots along Mount Hope Street.
All the way down to Linden, yeah.
Yep. And the other part of that is going to be how much land is currently cleared.
Right.
On those homeowners' properties. So there's going to be some, some varying distance there, but they're obligated to keep, which is the plan he provided tonight.
Okay.
Strip there.
All right. And any, like, when the access road going down the side, is the same thing with the buffer for the road, access road from Mount Hope Street going in? Like, is there anything that'll protect like the Hogans' property distance-wise? So if they go out on their deck, they don't see cars or people zooming in and out?
These two.
67 Mount Hope.
Yeah, so they're proposing to keep vegetation there as well. They're just going to clear enough to build the road and the offgrading from the roadway.
Okay.
Anything else is to remain.
All right. And then the next question would be, the updated plans that were supposed to come in, I know they were just supposed to be for Lot 5, an update on it, but the web still had the existing plans, and I know they haven't been updated or sent in yet, but will those plans that vary that much more than what the existing plans on the planning board site now, will those, will there be any difference?
No, it was just additional.
For that Lot 5?
Additional sheets, one, each is an sheet.
Yeah.
Behind Lots 4.
Right, yeah, Lot 4 and 5, there was a question about the topography, how it was excessive, but it's a 3 to 3.5 to 1. So, I mean, that's, that's a cuttable, so that was a question.
Next agenda, I will include the latest sheets on top of the front.
Yeah, but if the existing plans don't vary that much, I don't want to keep having to print big sheets, but I, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, anything we get will be updated.
Okay. And the last question for here is, can wetlands be moved? And if they can, how much and where? I've heard you can move up to 5,000 square feet of wetlands, but it has to be moved and then refilled? Is that something that can be done?
Not our purview, but in the act, you can fill up to 5,000 square feet as long as you replicate that within the same well and system.
Are you proposing to do that?
No, we're not proposing to fill any wetlands, and we're preserving a 25-foot no disturb to all the wetlands, so we're not, that's part of, that's a policy.
The Wellness Protection Act basically says minimize disturbance as you can. So even if you wanted to fill it on a site like this, you have the opportunity to work around it, so you probably would not get a permit.
Yeah, because we have notifications, mostly on that side of the street, down near the end, they have, we have septic, it's not just septic, but well water. So any, I think disruption of the, you know, environment or even the wetlands can also affect it. My well's 595 feet deep. So that's, it's a deep well. Some people can run their wells all day long. I can't because it, 2 and 1/2, 3/4 horsepower pump to pump it up, and it can still, if you use it too much, can run it out, and then it has to recover. I mean, whether it's town water or well water, it's still coming from the same aqua filter. So, okay, well, that takes care of my questions. And the last question is for the board, and it's as far as notifications, because the last meeting, I remember saying, August 22nd would be the meeting. But I couldn't find any notifications in the Sun Chronicle the past two or three days. And I went on the website yesterday and today, and I didn't see anything for the planning board until around 5 o'clock, when I went on, and I actually saw the planning board, and it had, it had the layout schedule for tonight's meeting. And I was able to just text a few people, and everyone I texted, no, I didn't know. And I said, well, they said letters before, but I said, I don't know if they have to send you letters every time there's a meeting. I think the initial, you know, they have to send out letters to let you know.
Notification, initial public hearing.
That's it.
What do we do with the Sun Chronicle, Gil?
Publish a legal ad one time.
One time?
Twice, but.
And that was twice for August 2nd, for the August 2nd meeting.
Correct.
It's not for every meeting.
Right.
For subsequent meetings, it's posted on our agenda.
You have to pay attention, or you have to give a call.
Give a call or an email.
What else? Mr. Rose is, the town social, yeah, okay. It's good to see you.
I was looking for my father.
They post on Facebook, I don't know if you're a fan of Facebook, but, but they post on Facebook the weekly meetings. There's a number of ways. I would always advise you, just if you're worried about missing a meeting call, Gil.
Yeah, I do. I came in to see him last week for a few minutes.
So just so you know, today I posted a piece of paper that stated the meeting. What does that tell you?
Yeah. And I got a copy of that and I printed it, so that was good sharing, but made a hustling that started driving to DPW until it hit me, so. True, true. And knowing now that the meetings are going forward, all the meetings are going to be here, we'll just try maybe to coincide with the, no, Atabaro pop on the football, make sure there's no games on Thursday.
First and last Thursdays of every month likely.
You don't have to worry about soccer anymore, right, Jason?
Thank you for your efforts. It's good to see you again, sir.
All right, good.
Mr. Rose is a longtime soccer coach for the kind of, in the rec program back in the day for the recreation department. Definitely served his, his, any other, any other public comments before we move on?
Public hearing comments?
I just had a quick question.
Yes, ma'am, could you come up, identify yourself?
Elaine Hogan. When you talk about the stone walls and everything else, are you addressing the animals that live back there? Is that part of that preservation? I know there are deer back there, turtles, different kinds of animals that live there. I don't know if.
Again, I would aim that question more toward the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
I don't want to avoid your question, ma'am.
Sure.
And certainly we can pass that question along, I mean, into our office.
Okay.
And see if we can get you some information on mitigation there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need to continue this?
Yeah, so make a motion to continue the hearing and state the.
You have to make a motion to continue hearing?
Yeah. Are you going to be ready for the next hearing with all your?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's the fourth, right?
September fourth?
Yep.
So do I have a motion to continue the public hearing until September fourth?
Do they have a limit today?
No.
So moved.
Yeah, we have a, it's been moved by member Lawrence, seconded by vice chair Blaze. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Votes three, nothing, Gil.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're on to planning board matters. The chair's corner, nothing, other than I failed to mention, and I'd like to say in front of the cameras, that we're missing a planning board member tonight, Greg Walsh, and I'm sure I speak on behalf of the planning staff and the planning board to wish to him and his family congratulations on their arrival of their new baby daughter, Eleanor. So he's, I know that we consider ourselves to be doing important works here today, but he's at home clearly doing something more important, and we wish the family well. Short of that, all I had under chair's corner, and Gil, you and I talked about this this past week, is I would love to, first off, I wish you a wonderful trip, but I'd love to get, to my fellow board members, I'd love to actually set goal dates for ADU adoption and mixed-use overlay adoption. And I know the complexities of these things and appreciate the work up until now, but I feel, I've always felt that if we aim at a date, we can back into it with the meetings, so I'd like to, I'd like to make a goal of setting those deliverables on our next meeting.
I thought the last meeting we said, correct me if I'm wrong, the first meeting in September was, the ADU was gonna be on that. Okay.
Yeah, I think ADU is ready to roll.
Well, it's in final descent. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then mixed-use overlay, let's just get a bullet list of what hurdles we need to discuss and clear, and let's get to work on them.
It will be on a September fourth meeting, so we will aim to work on it then.
Perfect. That concludes the chair's corner. Mr. Planner?
So I'll just be brief, 'cause last meeting, we did not meet for a while, so I skipped over this, and this is just more of a formality, right?
I'll turn the microphone toward you a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got, I got it muted. I muted it because I was typing and I didn't want.
Thank you.
So we had a very busy meeting last, and I skipped over this, but just so we have the trust and the deed for the adult retirement community on Mount Hope Street. So this is more of a formality, right? Like, we don't construct the project, manage it or so forth. This is more of a, we are reviewing the HOA in compliance with the approved plan and its construction. So the HOA is stating the same amount of building types, open space, common space of what is being built. So in the last, I don't know, couple months ago, the attorney and I came up with a final draft, and we sent it to K P Law after, and I will just quickly go through the changes that our attorney made. So if you could just look at the trust, page one, fourth paragraph, she requested the bucket page number of the special permit at the registry of deeds.
Do we have a printout of this?
Yeah, I do. Trust, page one.
No, that's zoning subdivision.
Big time, there's a lot of people.
There is a lot of people.
Triangle paperless, but it's all working.
That's my folder. Here, take mine.
Wonderful. I, I'll cuddle up.
Okay. Anyhow.
All right. Can you start again, Gil?
No, it's all good. It'll be quick. Trust, page one, fourth paragraph, the attorney requested the bucket page number for the special permit that's at the registry to be cited. Moving quickly, I'm flipping my pages. Page seven. The attorney added clauses that the town has the perpetual right in easement, perpetual, sorry, right in easement to access a property at all times. Also.
That's eight A.
That is eight A, yep. And then eight A B also add in new, eight A C also add in new, just some town protections. We could request at any time for repairs and maintenance, and the developer, or rather, HOA has thirty days to prove, to provide written notice. See? Just some sort of enforcement mechanism there. Page ten. One A was added. Small language that the developer is responsible for the operation maintenance plan and the stormwater system to maintain the private way and open space area.
How are we looking at that one, right? So it's submitting annual maintenance report. How do we police that?
Yeah, so that's a good.
I'm not saying it's bad language, but how do we as a board or town?
It's a good question, because I feel like it's a very commonly discussed among municipalities. And I feel like no one really does anything.
No one does it.
Pay attention, yeah. Like, nothing at all. So Sandra and I thought of some idea, but I wanna do more research first, 'cause I don't know, like, we don't wanna be excessive, right, but we wanna make sure developers are maintaining their system. So we thought of maybe using, like, a permit system internally where the developers require, they get automatic notification on viewpoint, like automated every, you know, December that they have to submit there, upload it online, and we kinda create some sort of database, but that'll be discussed way down the line. But to answer your question, Bill, right now, no one does it and no one looks at it, including Shannon or Sandra or I, we just, you know, only when a complaint comes up, a resident comes in the office, and that does happen.
Typically, when it happens.
We do ask, like, hey, like, can you provide that? And also for street acceptance, we also, and believe it or not, they don't even provide it for street acceptance, but we ask them to provide the annual maintenance logs for street acceptance. So I guess it's really the honor policy right now, and if it's like a problematic project that really has issues, I follow up more frequently.
Yeah, right. But I mean, let's say it's, project's done, developer's gone, five years from now, the HOA is not submitting, or HOA or anybody else for that matter, submitting these things. We don't have any policing mechanism, we don't have any leverage over anybody for anything. So that's, we put in all our permits, it's required in every SWIP, every O and M and the stormwater report, but there's never any follow-up. We don't have any, we don't have any teeth, other than just sticking it in the permit and saying, hey, how come you haven't done it? So I don't know.
Yeah, like, I'm not.
I think it's the more researchable we may be able to do, but I don't, I just don't know how.
Like, I'm not sure if this is applicable, but the building commissioner can issue fines for site plants that are not in violation. However, again, I'm not sure if this is applicable, because this is more of a maintenance issue rather than, like, you know, compliant with this.
Not in compliance with their special permit.
So it could be an option. I'm not sure, like, it could be where we could issue a fine, you know.
Right, but wouldn't we have to develop some sort of town ordinance to that effect that gives the town the ability to assess fines?
Well, I'm wondering, like, there is an ordinance now that states, like, if the developer is not in compliance with their approved site plan, some language should affect, but I'm wondering if we could apply that here, and I'm not sure. It could possibly? I don't know.
But in most cases, the developer is gonna be in compliance, because they have to provide some assurance during the as-built and the final stages of the project for us to sign off, and then they disappear, because their project is done, it's transferred to whatever party it may be. So that party becomes responsible, and they might not even have any idea they're responsible, let alone having to do the report.
Yeah, you're right, and that's what the developer will argue. He's gonna say, I built it to plan, and I submitted as-built, and.
Right, and now I'm done and gone, and it's the next person's problem, and.
HOA.
Right.
Yeah, so, I don't know, that is a complicated.
I mean, it is in here, right? I mean, it says, tell them they have to do it. Will they read it is the other thing.
It comes up all the time.
All the time, yeah.
And then you've got the.
Yeah, yeah, it's a wormhole.
So that's the last change in that document, and then the deed, page one, second paragraph, same thing, just added the bucket page number of the special permit. Page four, eight on the bottom. Nine, ten, and eleven, just added more language, I guess, specifying common areas and facilities to define exactly. Page ten. The second to last paragraph, I forgot what change was here, 'cause it's been a while, but I highlighted, I think the first sentence was changed. Page eleven, twenty-two, conflicting provisions, that whole section was added by the attorney.
The town's attorney?
Correct.
Okay.
Just saying that anytime if it conflicts with chapter one, eighty-three A. The town, I guess, has ultimate authority. And page twelve, twenty-four, termination modification was added. Well, that, anytime if they terminate the HOA, that is, they have to provide notice to the town, or.
We have to approve it.
Amendment or modification. And that is, I'm sorry, one more, I guess, very, page twenty-two, just added a date, just exact date of the stormwater operation maintenance plan added at the end, dated June one, twenty-twenty-one, revised through November twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-one, just to make sure it's the same.
I like that last sentence. The town has no responsibility to maintain, operate, and repair the stormwater system.
And I added a bunch of language like that. The goal for me was to make it as clear and easy as possible that whoever buys this owns it.
Right.
Hopefully, the developer says that to the residents that, you know, that wanna buy.
So these are the final docs? I don't, they don't need anything from us, right?
No, no, nothing, no, nothing from you, just.
So now they just need to record these and show?
Yeah, so he did already, actually, and I have the bucket page.
Okay.
Some of it is actually funny.
What's that?
I get a kick out of some things. So page twenty-seven, paragraph thirty-one.
Oh, no.
Says they're not gonna discriminate on the basis of age.
But it's an age-restricted facility?
Copy page.
Kind of counter-influential, I guess, yeah.
Did anybody read it?
Not that part, apparently.
Yeah. They did include, so I was rifling through it, looking for it, but they did include that it has to be a hundred percent of one person over fifty-five, a hundred percent of the units, which is one of the things we required.
Yeah.
That's it. I mean, I'm not gonna.
And no minor children.
Anything else for planning?
I'm not gonna change too much of the attorney's draft, so I just added, no, 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 I just added.
Just fucking.
To the town, other than that, I'm not, I'm skimming through. Not much else.
I just remember that issue coming up, so I wanted to make sure it ended up in there with the hundred percent.
Yeah.
Because that was a concern of residents, was the percentage of over fifty-five, and then whether there'd be kids there getting on the bus and the like.
Yeah.
And Greg Lawrence did read through it. He emailed me with some comments and stuff, so that was good.
That's you, right?
Last time I checked.
Last time I checked.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for planning?
That's it.
Any comments from the board?
Nope.
None.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn made by vice chair Blaze, seconded by member Lawrence. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstaining, we're good, three, three, nothing.